Okay. All right, I get to do this. Hello, everybody? So this is the... Shh, thank you. This is, I can't see with my reading glasses on, but thank you. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting for November fifteenth. We will start the meeting by reading the governor's statement, which I brought special reading glasses because it's really small. Pursuant to chapter one oh seven of the acts of two thousand and twenty-two, this meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in person and via remote means, not really, in accordance with applicable law. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting in person, attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning into Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel twenty-six or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question slash comment prior to or during the meeting to jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceedings and respond to accordingly. Okay. So with that, let us rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will proceed to the acceptance of minutes. In this case, we have both the September meeting and the October meeting to approve. Let's do it in one fell swoop. Does anybody have any comments on either September or October? Any edits they would like to make? Or do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the September and October meetings.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. And our first order of business tonight is the continued public hearing, fifteen to seventeen Ferber Avenue. So before we start, I remember that since I did watch the recording of this, that Mr. Kousha recused himself. He will be recusing himself again this evening. I was not present, so I will not vote on this one. We have five voting members here who were present at the meeting, so I'm going to ask all our alternates to also please vote. That will give us the five votes we need. All right? All right, so our clerk just left. So, Mike, you want to be the clerk for this one?
All right. So, do I read it with the current piece or...
We have to read it again since we read it September?
Yeah, no, we don't.
Okay, we don't, all right. So we will not do that. And Mr. Byers?
Good evening, how are you, Mr. Chairman?
Good, how are you?
Good. Yeah, so the meeting that, the last meeting I was at, the original application, if you recall, had three units. We were looking for some variances. We were entering from the rear from Upland Street. There was a lot of, if you recall, opposition people on Upland Street. So we redesigned the project and cut it down to two units, which we said we'd do. And we're not touching Upland Street at all. The entrance will be from Ferber, two garages, you know, in the front of the structure. There's no variances I'm asking for, so we will be withdrawing the variance application tonight, assuming things go nicely. So I've sent over, and I appreciate the fact, I think I got the stuff in a little after the deadline. But there is a new plan, again, showing no variances at all. And we'll be knocking down the existing two-family, which is kind of located in the back rear of the lot. Although, again, this is an unusual lot because it's got a frontage on Upland and frontage on Ferber. So we're just putting it right in the middle of the Ferber piece.
Okay.
This says that you still need a special permit to replace the building. So is that, that's just because you're replacing a grandfathered building with a new grandfathered building effectively?
I believe that's... Is that correct, Paul?
Yeah. It's still zone, it's still family. He's got to reach a question for a two-family.
Okay.
Any questions from the board to Mr. Byers?
On the plan, I'm not seeing, I mean, the garages are clearly in the front of the building. I'm not seeing where the driveway is, except for one small patch of paved driveway. It looks like along the property line. Is that accurate? Like, sort of right here is the only place where I see paved driveway. I'm assuming there will be...
They'll be right in the front, yeah.
Right in the front?
Exactly.
And not along the side?
No, nothing along the side. That's the old driveway.
Oh, okay.
So if you look at the...
Existing driveway versus, okay.
So then it'll move? Because you also have like a hedge here in front of the building, right?
Yeah.
And so is that good, is that hedge going to go away? And then the idea is that the driveway just comes in straight through there? Or does it go sideways and in?
It's straight, right off of Ferber.
Okay.
So if you look at the plan for the house, you see the garages are in the front.
Right, right, no, I understand. It's just, there's a hedge here that's also right in front of the house on the large plan that you gave us? And so I just wanted to make sure that, so those, I assume, are going away?
Yes.
And then it's going to get...
Yeah, I don't know why the engineer left those.
Okay. Well, if that's just what is there presently and then this is all superimposed on top of it, I can read it that way. I just want to make sure I was understanding.
And there will be paved driveways over to Upland?
No, not at all. Nothing on Upland. We learned our lesson.
Any other questions?
No questions, just a comment. I think it's like a very nice addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
No more questions? All right, and we open up a public comment. Is there anybody here who wants to comment on Ferber? Well, that's a change.
Yeah.
I guess they are all satisfied.
Yeah? Was this reviewed with the neighbors?
We haven't talked to any neighbors on this new plan. I think we got enough input from that last meeting that...
They're all waiting to town hall?
Yeah, exactly.
Hopefully not, okay.
They got a copy of the new plan?
I don't know, I mean, it was all...
It's all posted online.
It's all public.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
You hear a second?
I'll start, yeah.
All right, all in favor of closing public discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, board discussion, anybody? I'm going to assume, given the lack of questions I heard, that you guys are all pretty comfortable.
I think it's a real nice enhancement to the neighborhood. I mean, the existing property is, this will be a nice addition.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that I most had trouble with last time is that there was just no way to make the driveways that they were planning on doing not go right along the edges of the property and things like that. And this design gets around all of that, so I think it's fine.
Anything else? If not, do I hear a motion? Oh, does that clerk want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I'm going to have to figure out how to sort of patch this together because I guess we're going to have a different text. Jen, will you need like a copy of an edited text for this? Or...
Yeah, I can get it from here.
All right, thank you. So, I move that we grant a special permit to Hassan Golis, manager of the El Ryan Group LLC, for the property of fifteen to seventeen Ferber Avenue, North Andover, Mass, in the R four zoning district. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow the, to replace an existing two-family structure with a new two-family structure. Is there anything else that I'm missing in that motion?
Do you want to...
Oh, referencing, yes.
Referencing plans, yeah.
Yes, referencing plans by Millennium Engineering dated, where's the date here, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two? And further referencing plans, so that, I don't, do we have a number for this sheet? Sheet one of one?
A one of one.
Yes. Saying proposed, showing the two-unit dwelling. So there's a large sheet, I don't know what to call it. There's not like a specific designation for it. And then also plans A one oh one, A one oh five, and A one oh six. And these are dated, also dated November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Right, that, yeah, that's what I said, yeah, plan of land. I was just looking for some like serial number or something like that. But yeah.
Motion has been made, you hear a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll just go down the roll. Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, and I would like to extend my thanks to you and the owner for taking all those comments into consideration, coming back with something that was really easy. I expect this one to be an hour.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, huh? Find my agenda. There we go. So next up is a new public hearing on one oh four Bonnie Lane. Nice to meet you. Thank you. All right, we need the clerk to read the item.
I'll be happy to.
All right. You got it?
Well, I got some of this in Bonnie Lane.
Here.
Notice is, notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover... What's the name of this place, Jen?
School Administration Building.
The School Administration Building. And what's the address?
Five sixty-sixth Main Street.
Five?
Sixty-sixth.
Five sixty-sixth Main Street in North Andover. On Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven thirty PM, to all parties interested in the petition of Patrick J. Gaffney, the property of one oh four Bonnie Lane, map sixty-two, parcel forty-seven, North Andover, Mass, oh one eight four five, in the R one zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town of, to town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash four point one nine, C two C, non-disturbance buffer zone in the R one zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new permanent structure and eighteen by thirty-six in-ground swimming pool within the one hundred-foot non-disturbance buffer zone of a wetland resource area located within the watershed protection district. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at one twenty Main Street, North Andover, Mass, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of eight AM to four PM, Tuesdays from the hours of eight AM to five thirty PM, and Friday from the hours of eight AM to eleven thirty AM. By the honor of the Board of Appeals, Ron R. Fagan, Chairman.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, can you introduce yourselves and give us a background, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Gordon Glass. I'm an attorney with Johnson &amp; Borenstein, a land use law firm located at twelve Chestnut Street in Andover. With me today is Pat Gaffney, the owner of one oh four Bonnie Lane. We're here tonight petitioning for a variance, as noted, for the construction of an eighteen-foot by thirty-six-foot in-ground swimming pool on the property. I believe the board is well familiar with these types of applications, and I think it's a simple and straightforward application. So I'll note a few key points and then turn it over to the board for their questions pretty quickly. The property is located in the R one zoning district, and generally, a swimming pool would just be allowed as an accessory. However, because of the property's dual location in the watershed protection overlay, we have to seek a variance because the proposed site of the pool is within one hundred-foot buffer zone to wetland resource area. And if the board takes a peek at the plan we submitted with the application, it is right at the edge of the one hundred-foot buffer zone. I mean, it's barely located within that buffer zone. The reason for the sighting of the pool within the buffer zone, because this is a unique property, both as to its shape and to its topography, and it's impacted by the nearby wetlands. So looking at the property, that buffer zone swallows up the entire western portion and much of the center of the site. And then on the eastern site, the topography is characterized by excessively steep grade. And the slopes there make, render the placement of the pool in that area impractical. And it would require a large amount of earth disturbance, retaining walls. Really, the proposed site of the pool is the only flat area of the property where it makes sense to put the pool with environmentally sensitive design with the least amount of impact possible. You know, and the other two questions beyond the unique topography of the property and the unique shape of the lot that the board needs to consider is whether the construction of this pool will be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. My understanding is there are pools to the north and the east of the property as a relatively contained, small, in-ground swimming pool. And also, alongside the pool, Mr. Gaffney is proposing some extensive work to benefit the watershed, revegetation and renaturalization, roughly three hundred and fifty square feet, within the twenty-five-foot no- disturb zone, a critical area. And he's also proposing to surround the pool with permeable paver patio, which means that stormwater will be allowed to infiltrate in the crevices in the patio and reach what I believe is supposed to be a layer of crush zone and then reach the ground beneath. So this project from the ground up, its sighting and the additional aspects to the project has been designed to be environmentally sensitive. And, you know, that's something that's going to be reviewed also by the Conservation Commission because citing this within the hundred-foot buffer zone means we're going to have to get an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. So they're going to have a full bite of the apple to look at this project and determine whether it has any negative impacts on the watershed, which we would argue it certainly doesn't, and it actually improves the area. Lastly, this board needs to consider whether this project would derogate from the purposes of the bylaw. But the bylaw explicitly establishes this dual process whereby we get a variance from this board and then a special permit from the planning board for the construction of this pool. And as such, the bylaw doesn't disfavor these types of projects. It merely regulates these types of projects. And I think the purpose of the bylaw and the purpose of this process with the board is for the board to determine if the citing of the project, if it's been cited at the best place it can be cited on the lot. And I would argue that, for all the reasons we've outlined here tonight, that this is the best site for the project. With that, you know, I thank the board for its time. Happy to answer any questions the board may have about this.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
So the pool is eighteen by thirty-six. The plan says it's twenty by thirty-six. So I just want to verify that.
Yeah, it's a slight contradiction from this to, I think, what's handwritten. And so I would defer to the engineer, but I think twenty by thirty-six was, when this was written out and planned, was to go for the larger approval. And if you can scale back, that's easier than trying to scale up if the, if the topography calls for that two feet to be utilized versus not.
I'm getting, I'm getting the signal, so if you can aim for the mic.
Sure. So I can start that over. So the twenty feet listed on here was designed by the engineer, and then I think it was handwritten in or typed in at eighteen feet. I don't know if that was just a slight oversight, but my assumption is that the twenty feet would be the more desirable. And if we would scale, if we needed to scale down to eighteen, we could, as opposed to asking for eighteen and needing the extra two feet due to the topography.
So what are you asking for, the eighteen or the twenty? I've only heard eighteen, eighteen, but I'm reading twenty.
Yeah, I'm happy to adjust it to whatever needs to be adjusted. Ideally, since it's mapped out here for twenty, I would go for twenty. But if, if the, what's written down is what needs to be adhered to in the documents you have, eighteen it is.
So can you change it to twenty? I don't know how you do that, but...
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I think it depends on what the motion is that Mr. Kousha gives, so...
If we want it for twenty, we'll consider twenty and we'll just revise it for motion.
Okay, yeah, I prefer that.
All right. So let me ask a question, because I...
Those were the measurements, Rob.
How far over that hundred-foot line are you?
Well, you know, it's not over the hundred foot. It's between the fifty and the hundred.
All right, so...
This is the hundred-foot line here?
Okay, okay, okay. Got it. That's where I couldn't follow the line. All right. And you say this is the best place to cite it. What if you moved it closer to the southern line of the property?
The southern line of the property? If you see, looking on the map here where you see the, there's a marking that says six-inch PVC.
Yeah.
Just, just to the left of that, there's a pretty significant slope drop-off. So there's a small retaining wall and then a pretty significant grade down. And it's almost like a double undulation because it comes away from the house and down towards the lake. And so bringing it that way would just require much more extensive work to bring it up to a level with the rest of the lot.
And that would actually bring it closer to the...
Correct, to the lake. Yes.
Don't we also have something in the bylaw about the pools can't be beyond the front...
Front edge of the house.
Oh, front edge of the house, okay.
If you be on the side, it can't be past the front edge.
I saw it, it was pretty steep.
Okay.
There is a proposed construction path here that sort of goes in front of the building and then around, around the backyard. I also drove by today. There's several trees that are in that area that I didn't see marked for removal. Is that... And I don't really see a way going around the back with all the existing patio that's in there. So are any of those trees possibly going to be removed?
Yeah, so I'll answer the second part of that first. The way around the back was completely ruled out due to the proximity to the wetland and the absolute no disturb there. It's well within twenty-five feet to go around that backside. So that was completely ruled out. Where you do see the path, there are some significant trees that I believe the engineer did mark for removal. However, there's a, if you drove by today, and I know not everybody can visualize it, but there's that lane in between where, I'm saying lane, it's a pathway that I do mow regularly. It's of grass that wouldn't require tree removal. But the engineer did, I believe, mark some trees for removal.
Is the lane you're talking about going straight up from like the circle at the end there?
Yeah, if you're, if you're, as you're entering the circle to the right of the house, if you looked up...
Right.
It's the only place that, it's lower than the house grade, but it's the only place that's level and it leads up to this, to this location.
That did seem like a good way to enter. From this path, it looks like that cross is not part of the property. It's not yours.
Correct, that's a, it's in a budding property to, the neighbor next door has their property that their home is on, as well as a sistering property. And it's about a, I want to say, it goes from like three feet with, at near the driveway up to about twelve to sixteen or eighteen feet of their property, so...
I saw the stakes.
Yeah.
Do you know them pretty well? Are you like fairly certain that they'll let you bring construction vehicles in there?
I know them well enough that after going through the other sort of approval process, that that would be the least of my concerns in pursuing this. Yeah.
Yeah, because the way that it's marked out here looks like, to my eye, you'd have to cut down at least three or four more substantial trees to come in sort of along the front edge of your house without crossing over onto their property. So that was kind of a concern of mine is there's already several trees that are being cut down. And I understand you'll talk to the Conservation Commission about that. But yeah, to cut down a lot that would have been in the front of the house also, let's say, is a substantial decrease of the vegetation of the watershed, which is a significant part of the filtration system there. And I guess I have a question for the board. So my reading of the, the reason why the overlay was created is sort of the purpose, stated purpose, was to maintain filtration and purification functions of the land while conserving the natural environment. And although the paver system is a perme, you know, permeable paver system, my understanding is this wasn't, is lawn right now, right? It's not like it's asphalt or something completely impervious.
Correct, the area where the pool is proposed is maintained.
Yeah. So like the pool itself is not going to be allowing for drainage into the watershed. You know, even compacting the area around it with construction significantly increases runoff. I guess I wonder, like, do we have a lot of data about the construction of pools and how much it does impact the watershed and the ability of water to filtrate through subsoil?
I have no data.
Or experience with that sort of thing? Is this something that we folks have permitted in the past?
I don't have...
Yeah, we have. Well, since I've been on the board, we've permitted.
I don't have any data. However, this still has to go to conservation.
Gotcha.
And they're the possession, and they're in the possession of all of, quote, the data.
Gotcha.
So they'll pick this thing apart as to what all of the above is all about. We, in my opinion, just allowing them to go to conservation.
Gotcha.
And that's where the real work begins.
Right.
I mean, it is in our discretion to look at this in any way that we please. And so your questions are not unreasonable. And if you want to base your decision on those, that is totally okay. I would say, historically, this board has not been quite so careful because we know that the Conservation Commission is following up and will have a lot of those questions.
And that's what I get paid for.
Did you say it also has to go to planning?
We get paid. Yeah, it'll require a special permit from the planning board. So this is, this is really just the first step in a tripartite permitting process, yeah. And I, and I do think that's a key point. I mean, if we talk about removal of trees, if we talk about, I mean, the conservation, yeah, the Conservation Commission's going to dig, dig into all of this.
So am I reading this correctly about the existing dwelling? Is it within this buffer too?
It is.
So is this like my house where these buffers were all drawn after the house was built?
My understanding is significantly. I think this house was built in eighty-one, and I think this, this new overlay is within the, I want to say, the nineties.
I think it was ninety-four, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I have the same issue. All right. Other questions?
I just, I, I drove by and it was difficult to, you know, to physically see what I'm looking at on paper. So I, uh, I did my best to try to get a lay of, uh, a look at the property before we discussed it here. I'd never been on that street before, I didn't even know it existed there, so. It was, uh, it's a very nice area there. I'm surprised, you said it's four hundred feet from your house to the lake? I would have thought that it was even a further distance, because you were on, as I drove down the road, you were on the left side of the road.
Correct.
And then, you know, so the, you crossed the road and then there was down to the hill. I would, I would have estimated it to be more than four hundred feet.
I think I drew it out on Google Maps, has like a distance measurement, and it was like at least, at least three seventy even from like the most conservative.
Yeah, it's a nice area back there.
We're very happy.
Got a diving board?
Are you inviting yourself on? Is that a condition on what you'll vote?
No one wants to see me on the diving board, but.
All right, any further questions? No further questions, open up for public comment. Anybody here to comment on Bonnie Lane? That's a resounding no. All right.
I make a motion to close public comment?
Thank you, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, second by Frank. All in favor of closing public comment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay, guys, let's talk it out.
His first question is who's voting on this one?
Was that, oh, yeah, okay, so, so here's the thing. I have not been able to drive, so I've not been able to see any property. So out of fairness to the applicants, I'm gonna remove myself from all voting. So we need two, I think, two alternates. So who are our two alternate voters and, you want me to, you want me to pick?
So it would just be Frank and Laura up next.
Okay, all right. So you guys will vote and that answers that question. All right, anybody who want to discuss this at all?
Well, I think the fact that this is going to the planning board and it's going to conservation, I, I'm comfortable with approving this.
I, I will admit that, um, like Ms. Craig Crome and I, I always feel a little squeaky passing the buck on things. You know, it always feels like, uh, that if we, if, if we, if we don't look at it carefully and then someone else doesn't look at it carefully, no one looks at it carefully. But, uh, I, I think this one is enough in the wheelhouse of the Conservation Commission that I, I can trust that they'll, they'll do a thorough job with it. And I don't feel like I have the expertise to judge it one way or the other.
I don't, I don't feel like we're passing the buck either, because the planning board has the benefit of getting comments from the DPW and Engineering Department, that sort of thing. So they have get, they're getting professional advice on that. So, uh, we're just looking at it in, in our purview and I'm, I'm comfortable with what they have here.
Any other comments?
I think my biggest concern is like not just from a standpoint of, um, you know, a board member, but also from a resident, I mean, solve our drinking water. It's, um, you know, like where does the water go when it's pumped out? I've worked at a lot of houses, it just goes in the woods. I can't see a place where it would go here where it wouldn't be within, uh, some sort of distance of the ground table that fades into that. And I mean, I, and I'm, so I'm also a little squeamish about it. But I understand that it is going to conservation, they have a lot more resources to track down true impact of things like this, I guess. I just want to sort of put on the record that, to me, I don't see it, maybe this is, I don't love pools enough to want to have one near, uh, something valuable. So maybe it's partly a personal thing also, but just to be sort of on the record. Like, I, you know, if our true purpose here is just to say, this is the only place on the site where it makes sense to put a pool, then I sort of have no choice but to say yes. But, um, personally, I don't know that there's enough reason to need a pool in a sensitive area to, to go forward with a plan like this.
At a, a previous one that came in front of us, that seemed it was as close to the lake as, or closer than this is, they, there was discussion about pumping it. And I, and, um, there was a method that is required, and I, I can't tell you what it was, but I remember there was a method of requi-, of, that was required in the manner that they pump it. Yeah, and also letting the chemicals fade away and testing it to, to make sure that they weren't evident in the water. I, I really can't tell you the specifics, but I know there's some method of doing it in a safe manner near there. So it, that can, that can be addressed and I'm sure the other boards will look at that.
Ron, can I ask a question?
We have to.
We have to reopen public hearing to do that.
Okay.
Do you want to move to reopen public hearing?
Well, I, I have a question that ties into the environment, so why don't we?
I make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
My second.
All in favor?
Okay, so the question is, um, is this gonna be a salt pool or is this gonna be chlorine?
So I hadn't gotten that far with the engineer. If one is more environmentally friendly than the other, I would, I would defer to that. I would certainly go with that. If saltwater is the option, I would take saltwater. My understanding is to, uh, if and when we get to the Conservation Committee, we will have to present a, a, an operation and maintenance plan, which includes the drainage process at the end of the year, and that has to clear as well. To answer your question, I, I would defer to whatever is more likely to be allowed.
So then what we could do maybe is conditionally say that it has to be addressed with conservation. I would, I mean, I would think intuitively that the saltwater would be more environmentally friendly and so, but that could be something that we, that we have addressed by conservation.
Well, except that in this area in particular, there's limits on like road salt and on all sorts of other things that affect, you know, like large amounts of salt in the body of water would cause dieback of freshwater and like amphibious life and things like that. So I would, I would probably guess that chlorine would be better because it would be so dilute by the time it gets to like drinking water supply. But it does seem like maybe Conservation Commission has more of a wheelhouse for this.
I would, I would hope, I would hope so.
It is kind of their explicit.
No, I'm sorry, if we're, if we're struggling with, you know, the hundred-foot barrier.
Right.
Right, we're definitely gonna struggle with what kind of water they use. I mean, that's all gonna be outside of any purview we have. So I would, uh, I would definitely have conservation as something they would focus on.
And if I could add, there, there are extensive federal and state regulations that govern the types of things you can just pump into the ground. So it, when a decision is made by a local board, there, there, there shouldn't be any kind of assumption that a future violation of law will occur rather than an assumption, because if that happens and there's, there are mechanisms to punish a future violation of law.
I mean, I have to assume that pumping out your pool into the woods is not illegal, otherwise I personally have seen many, many violations of that law.
I think, I, I do think.
By licensed certified companies just sort of getting after it, so.
I do think Conservation Commission would, would, they would definitely know what the, uh, what the standards are supposed to be about that.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with what the pumping standards for pools are. But I am generally familiar with the fact that there, there are a lot of laws governing pumping stuff into the soil. So I'm sure there is a standard that's established, uh, and I'm sure CONCOM will, you know, enforce that standard.
Sure, I think what we're struggling a little bit is like the proximity to drinking water. It's like, you know, it, it might not injure, uh, general woodland, but if it would somehow make its way into.
Although we, we are, we are outside of the zone for that, for Lake Chickaway, right? We're, we're not, you know, i- if it were not for this particular patch of wetland, which is not related to the drinking water, th- this would not be before the board at all.
This is a non-disturbance, not the like.
Yeah, this is about the wetland more than it is about our drinking water.
Right.
Which, like, we should also care about, right? But, but like, but it's not, it's not specifically the water that you're gonna get, you're getting out of the tap. If you, that's not the.
Yeah, it's for the health of the wetland, yeah.
And also if then, if there's any, if there's anything that the Conservation Commission cares about, it's wetlands. I do love Conservation Commission work, it's all wetlands.
All right, uh, while we open for public comment, any other questions to address to the applicants? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment again.
I make a motion to close the public comment.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it sounded unanimous to me, move forward with the discussion. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've got nothing else. I, I think that, uh, you know, again, I, I understand I used to use the word squeamish. So I understand the squeamish aspect of this, but I am reassured that people with much more knowledge than, at least I have.
That's what the people of conservation get paid for.
Will be taking a look at, yeah, so. Any other discussion? If not?
No.
No, okay. All right then, do I hear a motion from the clerk?
I make a motion to.
With the modification for that eighteen-foot to twenty-foot piece.
From the eighteen to the.
I think we're going.
Across side eighteen.
We're gonna go to twenty.
Cross eighteen and put in twenty.
So it's a twenty by thirty-six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm allowed to suck, because we closed it.
Yes.
That's what he said earlier.
Just nod.
I make a motion to grant the variance to Patricia, Patrick J. Gafferty for property at one oh four Barney Lane, map sixty-two parcel forty-seven North Endover Mass. Excuse me, oh one eight four five in R one zoning district, specifically, to grant that variance pursuant to town North Endover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five, four point one nine, C two, C, the non-disturbant, non-disturbance buffer zone in the R one zoning district for the purpose of constructing a new permanent structure and twenty by thirty-six in-ground swimming pool within the one hundred-foot non-disturbance buffer zone of a wetland resource area located within the watershed protection district. And I would like to make reference of a plan submitted by Endover Consultants dated March twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. There's only one sheet, that's it.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, and, uh, let's just, I'll take the vote down the line. Alan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Frank?
Yes.
Laura?
Aye.
Passed unanimously, congratulations.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thanks for coming in. All right, you lined up for the next one?
Well, you're pushing me, all right?
All right, next.
Be a minute to find the paperwork.
All right, I ha- I have it if you need it.
Yeah, hold on, let me get that.
Trinity Court, you down there?
Yeah.
All right, so we have a new public hearing for twelve Trinity Court. And would the clerk please read the notice? You have a notice?
Yeah, yeah, I got a notice. Just trying to clear up some, uh, work here, that's it. Notice is hereby given to the North Endover Zoning Board of Appeals to hold a public hearing at the town, at the North Endover, Jen, I need some help here. Police station.
School administration building.
At the school administration building at.
Five sixty-six.
Five sixty-six Main Street, North Endover, on Tuesday, November fifteenth, at seven thirty P M. To all parties interested in the petition of Deepak.
Nagarajan. Na- Nagarajan.
Nagarajan?
Yes, that's right.
I, I knew that's what they were doing, Nagarajan. For property at twelve Trinity Court, map sixteen parcel fifty-nine, North Endover, Mass, oh one eight four five in the R four zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town North Endover zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five, attachment three, table two. Summary of dimensional requirements for one side setback in the R four zoning district for the purpose of constructing in addition onto the existing home. Specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief variance of five foot eleven inches. Side setback proposed is nine feet one inch. Side setback required toward table two is fifteen feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at one twenty Main Street, North Endover, Mass, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of eight A M. to four P M. Tuesday from the hours of eight A M. to five thirty P M. And Friday from the hours of eight A M. to eleven thirty A M. By order of the Board of Appeals. Alexander A. Jacobs, Esquire? No? Hi, Alex.
All right, and just, uh, I'll get out ahead of this one this time. I will also not be voting on this one as I've not had a chance to see anything. So I assume my two alternates are Jim and Frank?
Frank.
Okay, so Jim and Frank, you guys are up. All right, name and address, please, and tell us what it's all about.
Uh, my name is Deepak Nagarajan. Uh, we live in, uh, twelve Trinity Court of North Endover. Uh, we are requesting for a variance of, uh, five feet and eleven inches, I think. So we currently have a, uh, a sunroom, uh, in, in place and also a deck that's in place. The sunroom doesn't have a full foundation, it ha, it's on stilts. So we use it, uh, only in the summer and, um, uh, winter it gets really cold and it's completely not used, the deck and the sunroom at the moment. And also, uh, I have two kids, small kids, uh, my daughter is eleven, she's in the middle school. My son is five, he's in the kindergarten, uh, school. And we are running out of space at the home. Like, we have, uh, three-bedroom, uh, uh, at the moment. And, uh, also my parents or my wife's parents, they come and visit us sometimes. So we are sort of squeezed for space in our current home. Uh, and that's why we thought we could change our existing structure, make it a, a permanent, uh, dwelling space, uh, with some basement for storage, extra storage, as well as two rooms for the kids. We thought of adding a bathroom, but for the cost, we are not adding a bathroom at the moment. Uh, it's, uh, mostly for space at the moment. We are requesting for, uh, additional variance, um, towards the property line.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now I'm gonna try this, questions to Mr. Nagarajan?
Yes, that's right.
Was I even close?
It's noise.
Questions to the applicant, please.
The only thing I said, it's, when somebody applies, Mr. Building Inspector, for, uh, zoning variance, they should have the numbers on the house. Right? I, I had trouble finding the house and I had to go around it.
I'm sorry.
Okay, a couple times, I mean, there's not a lot of houses on Trinity Court.
I found, I did process a subtraction of elimination.
Right, 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 I, I did the, the process of, of elimination too. But it just would be a little easier.
There's a number which, uh, there's a, 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 a plant that's a little overgrown, which sort of covers the number at the moment, I apologize.
I'm like Mr. Sidell, I, through the process of elimination, uh.
I, I looked it up on Google first, so you got a picture of it, so I know what I'm looking for when I go there. It's for future reference.
Although I was right in front of it.
All right, was that the question?
I mean, it's a rather small house.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and I'm looking at it and I'm saying, anybody who wants to expand their family is gonna have trouble, uh, living there, so. I personally have, have no problem with what you're trying to do.
And, and so the new building is entirely on the footprint of the deck that you have now, is that the idea?
That's correct, as well as we are requesting for the variance to go towards the property line.
Okay, so, okay, so it goes beyond the wood deck as it is now?
Yeah.
Yeah, you put that little bump out there, right?
Yeah. Ah, okay.
Okay, so that little bump out there, where you hope to make that a permanent structure? Am I saying, it's to the, to the left of the house?
Yeah, but it, it goes further than that.
It will be larger than that, uh, porch, so on this.
Right now, the deck and the porch look like they're nine foot five off of the house. He wants to go fourteen feet.
It's a, probably, it looks like it's probably at least twice as big as the, uh, in terms of like the overall size, as the enclosed porch is there there.
And, and I don't, I don't see him here, but, um, I assume you've talked with the, the Savastanos?
Yes, I did.
Have they expressed any thoughts or reservations on it?
They were pretty supportive.
Okay.
Uh, I spoke to him over the weekend also, Mr. Savastano, and, uh, uh, he was very gracious. He was saying that good luck with the project and, uh, and anything he would, in case he wants to come, he could come by to the town and give his support also in case. He, he said he might come in, but it looks like he couldn't make it today. But, yeah, I did speak to him and he said he had no objections.
I, I'm not worried about his ability to speak up, I, I, I know him a little bit, so.
Uh, when I was there, I looked, there was a gate on the fenced-in part for the backyard, sort of, and this would come like right up to the edge of the gate, is that right? Is the, is the fence changing at all, is I guess my question?
In case it needs to change, we could change, we're pretty flexible with that. It's mostly for the kids to be playing inside, inside the backyard, but I didn't look at it that closely to see if the, the fence.
I don't think it would need to change in, for, like, there's no way that I would see it changing to, to make it more in line with something that I was thinking. But I was wondering if you end up having to take out a gate there or it was covered by the addition, if you would be moving also the fence closer to the sideline. It could end up being a snowball effect, and I think there's some arbor, large arbor by day along that fence line. And then would you have to cut them down? It was sort of, that was my only thinking about how that, how coming out a little further there might cause some problems on that edge.
Thank you, just right here. You just have to add an additional piece of fencing to close that off.
Okay.
So the gate will stay where it is.
Okay.
There'll just be a small extension to connect it to where the, it.
To the edge.
And now that the addition is set back from the edge of the home, so you'd have to just connect those two points.
So it would just come forward a little bit to mediate it?
The gate will stay where it is.
The gate will stay.
Put an L shape to connect it.
And the, the hydro will stay.
That's gonna stay.
I think that was my question.
Is this, I, I know you said something about not in the bathroom, but is this a space for a future potential bathroom?
We are thinking for cost, we didn't take up the plan. But in the future, we, uh, in, in case we have finances up for it, we may want, in a couple of years, we may want to do the bathroom.
And that would go in this, this space?
In this space, where it looks like a closet at the moment. That's the space we would maybe use as a bathroom.
Yeah, gotcha. But what are you just, for the two bedrooms, this, uh?
That's correct.
Currently, it's a three-bedroom house, right?
It's, it is a three-bedroom house, yes.
Tiny ones.
Tiny ones, yeah. I have a very similar house, I actually live like right across, literally, there, so I know those houses in the area pretty well. I have a very similar house, I actually live like right across, way really, there, so I know those houses in the area pretty well.
Other questions?
I think the, um, I saw the deck, I saw the screen portion, I saw, I'm gonna say, um, the area where you're making your request for the additional property is, uh, is, I'm gonna say, a nice lot, meaning you have space to work with, that was, it seemed very reasonable to me.
Thank you.
And you have a basement within as well, right?
We, our current basement is, is, is there.
But you, but this, this addition space will have a basement, this is.
That's co-ification.
Yeah.
That is right.
Good.
And, and I, I, I think I know the answer to this, but, um, you know, looking at this, the, the, looking at the plot land. The only other place I could imagine this going would be towards the back. But I, I'm sure that that messes with the roof line, and then you have to figure out how to make the roof work there, and that gets much more complicated. So I assume that that's the reason that that's not.
I should have to walk through a room to get to these rooms.
Right.
So it almost renders another bedroom unusable.
Sure. Understood.
And even though it does come pretty close to the side of the property line, the neighboring structure is very far away.
Yeah, it's almost on the street a little.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, it's fifty feet from the one.
So visually, you don't see it.
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't look tight, you know? There's a lot of other, you know, the lots around Trinity's Court that if you were to put a structure right up to six feet from the edge of the property line, it would be an narrow alleyway between them and their neighbors, but not, not there.
Anything else?
No.
Do I hear a motion to? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Uh, anybody here for Trinity Court? Can you step up to our microphone and introduce yourself, please?
I'll be quick, I'm Mark Rogers, I live at nineteen Trinity Court, and I've been there since nineteen ninety-four. So I've known Deepak and his family since they moved in. And I love to keep good neighbors, so if he could get, expand his family and extend this house to be able to stick around, that'd be great. And I, and by the way, John Savastano stood up for me when I asked to push fifteen feet toward his first house on Trinity. And I stood up for him when he wanted to build his addition on his house, so we want to keep good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for correcting that one. And now do I hear a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing public comment?
Aye.
Any post? All right. Discussion.
I feel very comfortable with this. I, you know, it, it's only moving a little bit past physical structures that already exist. And, um, you know, the, the, the only neighbor that I would be really worried about is the, the one, you know, immediately abutting it, and it sounds like he has no objection.
Yeah, he's on another street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Essentially like the far back.
Right. And so, um, I, yeah, I, I see no problem with any of this, I think it's fine.
I support it.
All right. Mr. Clerk, do you wanna make a motion to?
I make a motion to grant, the, to grant the petition of Deepak. Which is?
Najarian.
Najarian. For property at twelve twenty, twelve Trinity Court, map sixteen, parcel fifty-nine, North End of a Mass, oh one eight four five, in the I four zoning district. Specifically, to grant a variance pursuant to town and North End of a zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five. Attachment three, table two, summary of dimensional requirements for one side setback to the I four zoning district. For the purpose of constructing in addition onto the existing home. Specifically, applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief variance of five feet eleven inches. Side setback proposed is nine feet one inch. Side setback required toward table two is fifteen feet. And I'd like to make mention of plans dri- drawn by Black Dog Design Remodeling. Uh, dated ten seventeen twenty-two. And the, the sheets number one, two, three, four, and five.
There are six.
Six.
There are six.
Oh, excuse me, that's six. But I think it was, uh.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Aye.
Or you want the plot plan, you want list?
Okay, you want me to make men?
Oh, wherever you want.
No, I mean, you, like, I make, like to make mention of the plot plan that shows the addition on the existing building as to where it's gonna lie. And the plot plan is prepared by John Abacus and Associates. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't see a date on it. Danny, June sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, we're live now.
Was that we're live?
We're live.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Thank you. I keep my language civil. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, let's go down on the roll. Alan?
Yes, yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you so much to the board.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. All right, we've come to item number six. New public hearing on twenty-five Commerce Way. You have it, or do you need it?
Hello.
Okay. Clerk, may I read the notice, please?
You're pointing to go, Jen, what's the address here?
Twenty-five Commerce Way.
Five sixty-six?
Main Street. School administration building.
It's a school administration.
Yeah.
You think I'll get it down, I'm old, give me a break. Notice is hereby given that the North End of a zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the North End of a school administration building located at one twenty-six Main Street. No, six twenty-six?
Five sixty-six.
Five sixty, five sixty-six. Can't read my own writing. Five sixty, five sixty-six Main Street, North End of a Mass, on Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. At seven thirty P M. to all parties interested in the petition of viewpoint sign and awning. For property at twenty-five Commerce Way, map thirty-five, parcel fourteen, North End of a Mass, oh one eight four five, in the I two zoning district. Excuse me. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to the town of, town of North End of a zoning bylaws. Section one ninety-five dash six point six G. three. Permanented signs in the I two zoning district for the purpose of replacing is existing signage with two new freestanding signs. Specifically, applicant is seeking relief from the number of freestanding signs allowed. Two signs are proposed and one sign is allowed. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town and North End of a zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash six point six G. three. Permanented signs in the I two zoning district for the purpose of replacing existing signage with two new freestanding signs. Specifically, applicant is requesting the placement of sign A needing a relief variance of thirty-eight feet from the property line. Proposed setback is two feet and required setback is forty feet. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to town and North End of a zoning bylaws, section one ninety-five dash six point six G. three. Permanented signs in the I two zoning district for the purpose of replacing existing signage with two new freestanding signs. Specifically, applicant is requesting the placement of sign B needing a relief variance of thirty-nine feet from the property line. Proposed setback is one foot, required setback is forty feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at one twenty Main Street, North End of a Mass. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of eight A M. to four P M. Tuesday from the hours of eight A M. to five thirty P M. And Friday from the hours of eight A M. to eleven thirty A M. By order of the Board of Appeals. Alexandra A. Jacobs, Esquire.
Thank you. Okay, could you introduce yourselves?
Good evening, um, my name is Lauren Delarda, I am from Viewpoint Sign and Awning, and with me is Matt Hutter. He is a representative from Berkeley Partners, who's the landlord of the property. Um, currently on the property, there are three freestanding signs. Um, there's three entrances or driveways that access parking lots. There's two that access a front parking lot and one that accesses a back lot that sort of, um, it accesses all the loading docks and everything for larger trucks. Um, we would propose to remove the three existing freestanding signs, which is one at each driveway, and install two new freestanding signs. One would be at the first driveway to indicate the entrance to the front parking lot, um, which is more for like employees, uh, visitors, um, sort of any small vehicle. And then towards the back of the property is another driveway that accesses that loading dock area. Um, so there would be a freestanding sign there at that driveway also, um, that identifies all the tenants. Um, currently, the three, or the two existing signs, um, that would be replaced with new ones, um, actually lie just beyond the property lines. Um, the one that is at the frontmost driveway, um, is pretty far off, I think it's two feet beyond the property line. Um, and then the one in the rear actually overhangs the property line by a foot. So the new signs would be behind the property line. Um, they'd be close to the property line, the front one being two feet and then the other one being a foot. Um, but it's still with, you know, on, on the, um, the property in question. Um, and then, um, the rear freestanding sign, although it's only a foot from the property line, it's actually set back from the road almost ten feet. I think it's a little bit less than ten feet, but there's a good amount of, of grassland in between where the road is versus the sign. Um, especially because there's no curb there. Other than the setbacks, the signs are to code. Um, they're within the size regulations, they're non-illuminated. Um, it's a commercial area dominantly. Um, there isn't actually a lot of businesses on this road. I think that this building is the last, um, commercial building on the lot before the end of the road. And I think that there's an airport, um, in the land beyond. So it's, the, the signs would have minimal impact on any surrounding businesses, no glare, nothing to that effect. So I would like to open, unless you have anything further to say, um, any questions?
Yeah, just the one thing, um, the rear entrance, um, you know, where the loading docks are, that is also the main entrance for two businesses. And, uh, for, for one of our tenants, it's really their, um, their entrance for commercial purchasers, where the, the front is for, you know, uh, residential or, or you and I to go in.
For retail customers.
Yes, yep.
I've been there.
Yeah. Great store.
Well, I'll ask the first question. So why, obviously, there's a big difference between one foot and forty feet, and two feet and forty feet. So why two feet, why not four feet, why not six feet? Why thirty-eight feet?
With the front sign, it's more of an issue of placement. Um, if you, I don't, well, obviously, you haven't visited the property, but the site plan and the photos that we provided sort of show you that that front, that first driveway, there's just a small median. Um, that the existing sign is on. So the new sign is slightly smaller and it would be set back a little bit from what it is right now. Um, and then the rear sign, again, it's, it's close to the property line, but it's farther away from the actual, the, the road line. So there's, um, there's still a good amount of space between the sign and the actual road. So it wouldn't impact any line of sight or anything like that.
Also, having been to the, the site, I, I kinda can't imagine any other place these signs would go. That they wouldn't have to be much larger to be seen and read clearly, I can't imagine forty feet away. I don't think I would be able to read it at all.
So, right now, um, while the variance numbers are huge, the reality is that you're basically repositioning the signs in the same way they are today.
Yeah.
I mean, and so, I mean, it's how it is, I, I went there, you know, I've been there. And so you have that little median area, you don't have, you have asphalt everywhere, okay, I mean, so you're replicating in, in many regards what you already have. You're, I'm gonna say you're, you're quasi-grandfathered, and that, that's how it's set up today.
Somewhat, I mean, the only difference is that the new signs would be placed fully on the property rather than, um, it overlapping the property line. So if anything, we're making the signs more conforming than they currently are.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and, and, you know, I guess technically the zoning only allows for one sign, but because of the way the building is set up, I would imagine it would be very challenging for people trying to get to that back entrance, not knowing that there's a sign there, so.
Yeah, I mean, the way, it's a, it's a, it's a commercial industrial park in that there is the front that you can see, and then there is the back that you can't see. Without signs providing direction to people, they won't be able to get to, um, be able to plummeting, plumbing in the other business in the back.
So, wow. I don't know if Paul, you're the right one to ask this to or not, but, um.
Who allowed the other signs, is that what you're gonna ask?
What?
Who allowed the other signs to be there?
No, no, but why would we have, why would we have a forty-foot setback requirement for monument or pylon type sign?
There's only laws.
Yeah, I, I thought so.
We, we have the same thing up on flagship and stuff like that, it's, I, I have no idea why they wanna, it was something that someone wanted back then to kick these back forty feet. This one, like you said, it's all commercial, this is, I'm sorry, I don't, this one's all commercial, this is just, that's why you're, they're in front of you to have, I only could go by.
Is it for any signs, like if it was a, 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 a building mounted sign versus a monument sign?
A wall sign's a different, wall signs go, go right on the wall. Any freestanding in industrial have to be forty feet off the property line.
And even with the way I was reading it, it sounds like this was specifically relating to ground signs. So like not ones that are like towering.
Pylon signs.
Yeah, which, so I can't even imagine how you'd read it forty feet away, but.
It's, well, they're allowed to be big, that's the thing, they, they could go a hundred square feet on, on these signs, so that's the idea of it, you know what I mean?
Right.
But don't forget, industrial also borders one fourteen and stuff like that, we don't want that close to, you know what I mean?
Which I feel like it makes total sense, like along one twenty-five, along one fourteen, to have things set back, and if it's one business name, a hundred square feet is huge. These are, it was like five or six businesses, right, in this?
Making that legible from forty feet away is not trivial.
Not a hundred feet.
I'm not disagreeing with any of that, like I said, I only Google, but that's why we have you guys.
And the fact they are going from three sides down to two sides, right, they're eliminating a side.
Yeah, why are you eliminating the, the third side, the, the one that goes into the five one?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it would be just a repeat of the, the initial sign up front and, and, you know, it's a little bit redundant and just a little bit more costly.
I mean, for me, wouldn't it help people to go into P V D supply, to drive down and then take the right? To go down the, the road a little bit?
Are you demanding a third side?
The first side is also by an entrance to the parking lot, right? It's not like you have to go down and go.
Right, it's the same parking lot.
But the second was signed is closer to the actual business, to the.
Door, to the door.
Yeah, but they're, but they're driving, not walking, so it's not that hard.
And this is. And the tricky thing is that P V D actually has two entrances.
There's one in the front, one in the back.
Well, there's the showroom, which is you would park in the front.
Right.
And.
And the supply house in the back, right.
Yeah.
It's great that you're so familiar with it.
You need any plumbing?
I asked you to carpenter, so I might actually take your name.
You don't want me for the plumber. Okay, any other que- questions? All right, so just FYI, 'cause I do this head-on, um, alternates voting on this one, Jim and Laura. Okay?
I don't see anybody in the audience.
See, I would've, I would've blown that off anyway.
Open it up to the galley.
All right, then, uh, should, uh, entertain a motion to end public discussion?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, all right.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? All right, we are in board discussion. Comments?
Seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a clear improvement on what's there, I would say.
I love no-brainers.
Somewhere in the ether is Paul Koch screaming about a thirty-eight foot. Failing Paul. But, uh, no, I'm fine with it.
All right, then, Mr. Clerk, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to grant a variance to viewpoint sign and awning for property at twenty-five Commerce Way. for property at twenty-five Commerce Way, map thirty-four, parcel fourteen, north end of a mass, oh one eight four five, in the R two zoning district, to grant a variance pursuant to Town of, Town of North End of a Zoning Bylaws, permitted signs in the R two zoning district for the purpose of replacing existing signage with two new freestanding signs. Specifically, applicant is seeking relief from the number of freestanding signs allowed. Two signs are proposed and one is allowed. The applicant, and to grant the applicant a variance pursuant to Town of North End of a Zoning Bylaws, section I ninety-five dash six point six G three, permitted signs in the I two zoning district for the replace, for the purpose of replacing existing signage with two new freestanding signs. Specifically, applicant is requesting the placement of sign A, needing a relief variance of thirty-eight feet from the property line. Proposed setback is two feet, and required setback is forty feet. I also want to grant the variance pursuant to Town and North End of a Zoning Bylaws, section one ninety-five dash six point six G three, permitted signs in the I two zoning district for the purpose of replacing existing signage with new freest, with two new freestanding signs. Specifically, applicant is requesting the placement of sign B, needing a relief variance of thirty-nine feet from the property line. Proposed setback is one foot, required setback is forty feet. Now, I'd like to make mention of a plan driven by, a, a plan written by Hancock Survey Associates, dated, what was the date?
June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Oh, I see, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. That's a single plan, and I'd like to make mention of signs by Viewpoint Sign and Honing that are unnumbered.
Yeah, the upper left-hand corner, they were numbered in hand, numbered by hand.
There's one of two, uh, there's two that are, there's four, or four.
So four, four pages.
They're called one of two twice up here. See this?
Oh, I see, one of two.
And then it, same thing again.
One of two, two of two.
And then here, no, no.
Okay, so we'll do Plan A, which has, uh, two pages, and Plan B, which has two pages. And they're written by Viewpoint Sign and Honing, and dated six twenty twenty-two.
Very good. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve. All right, we're down on the list. Alan?
Yes.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, that was our last item. However, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, you're looking at me quizzically. Did I miss something?
Okay.
So before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I would like to thank those folks who stood in while I was gone. I did have the privilege of watching guests on TV. It was great. So Alan, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much, and Alexandra, if you're out there, thank you very much. I really appreciate it, and I'm happy to be back. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.